We'd like to bring this session of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I want to welcome everybody out to the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. To get us started, I've asked Commissioner Michelle Carroll to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the review and approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. Has anyone had a chance to look through that? And do I have a motion?
I have. I'll make that motion.
You approve them for?
I approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, let those be entered in. Now, our next item on the agenda is a zone change. This is a public hearing, so we'll hear from staff and then the applicant and then the public. Who are going to bring some speed on this?
So, we've got the Maybe Office Building. It's located on South Lane, just south of where the New Pacific Horizons Credit Union is going. And there's also another development called LNS Commercial that will connect to this. And the site plan was reviewed by the DRC and it was approved with a condition that this development enhancement overlay is approved by the city council. So, the reasoning for this, if you could skip a couple slides, next one, okay. The reasoning for this is that the LNS property received approval for the same overlay to be able, one of the things that they were able to get with that overlay was a reduced landscape buffer along the existing residential property that's just to the south of these properties. And so, because that was approved that way, the only way that this project that connects to it could have the same buffer would be to go through the same process and get the overlay zone. So, that's what they applied for to match the existing, or to match what was approved for the other property. If they were required to meet the current standards, the parking lot would kind of be offset and they'd have to shrink their building. It would just look kind of weird, wouldn't function and flow as well as it does with this reduced buffer. So, they are showing increased landscaping, showing some trees along that buffer on the south end. And so, staff is recommending approval. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
So, I don't see, what landscaping is going there? Do you have something that shows that?
Next slide.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so there's the two additional trees. They pretty much landscaped everything that is surrounding the building. This building architecture is done by the same architect that did the one to the west. So, it'll match and flow and look like a nice cohesive development.
Could you go back a few slides so that we can see the greater area? Keep going back. Yeah, go forward, yes. So, here we have, so is this the, so right here is, give us, tell us what's in the surrounding areas.
Yeah, so this is the residential property. This is an existing house that will come down with this development. This is where the LNS development will be. They'll have some parking down here as well. And that's where the Pacific Horizons will be.
Credit Union School.
Pacific Horizon. And then this is, and they came and talked to us about putting in, putting in businesses that would, that would be compatible here with the River Bridge.
It was approved last spring.
Yeah.
Remember the ones that had the, we had concerns about the wall being just one straight wall up in there?
Okay.
They ended up resolving that concern.
Okay, so this just, you're, we're just wanting this to flow and be compatible here.
Correct.
And you said the architect is the same here as with this group here?
Yeah, so similar materials and elevations.
Okay.
And to confirm, the parking will flow through here, so the parking will connect, so there'll be access on the main street and South Lane.
Okay. So, they'll be moving the home and knocking that down, putting a business?
Correct.
Okay, because we had talked, I remember the discussion with the first group, did you say LNS?
Mm-hmm.
It's been long enough that I'm having a hard time remembering exactly, but we talked about the home behind it and now, now it'll become a compatible business.
I assume we expect, at least initially, most of the traffic to come from, well, I guess it depends on when this is developed. What does timing look like there?
It appears the timing will probably be relatively in sync. Both the site plans were approved, you know, within weeks of each other. So, it's just this additional process that needs to go through.
Cool.
And then, what's the conversations with the home that's right here, the home and homeowners?
That's the Hanks residence.
The Hanks?
I think Brad might have an update. I know you've talked with them with the River Bridge Event Center. I think they're intent on staying where they are for the time being.
They're happy to stay where they're at. They're more than cordial with everything that's gone around them. I dealt with them on the River Bridge Event Center and they were great. And they, they just realized that they're in a commercial zone, they want to hold out for as long as they can. And so, we're trying to be very respectful with them with that. They're, as far as I know, they're happy.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I work for the Credit Union just to the north, so I'm going to read keys myself.
Okay. Does Mike need to stay up here? Does he need to leave the days?
He's one of us.
He can stay? Yeah, okay. Joseph usually would leave, so just.
Sometimes, he was the applicant.
Yes, sometimes he was. Okay, great, thank you, Mike, for clarifying that. Do we want to hear from the applicant? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and address us? Maybe you could repeat what you just said also, because nobody on the, could hear it because it wasn't in the mic.
Oh, perfect. No, my name is Brad Maybe. So, yeah, this is a little office building that we're just looking at building for kind of some personal businesses. So, I think David did a very good job explaining on what we're trying to do. Really, at the end of the day, all we're doing is matching what LNS did because it, the flow wouldn't have worked. And so, as we started looking at the easements and utilities, it just, it made more sense. So, even though it's delayed us a little bit, we thought it was better to come back in and get this done.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, could you?
Should I ask her question about the? Question? Okay. As far as the Hanks, so no, so the Hanks basically, they, they own just to the south there. And I've talked to them multiple times. They're very happy with where they're at. They enjoy where they've been. They've been there for a long, long time. And so, they want, they want to continue to do, to continue to reside there. So, they've been more than, so I own the River Bridge as well. And so, they've been more than cordial with us with the River Bridge, along with this development going in. Almost too nice, like they're, I'm like, you gotta get mad every once in a while, but no, they are great people and they've been very good to work with. And so, it's just not time for that to go to commercial yet.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for the applicant?
So, on this, oh, nevermind. For this, we're just talking this strip right here.
Yep, that's all we're talking. It basically goes from 10 feet to five feet.
Five foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So, any other questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll now open this up to any public comment. If there may be here that is here to address this item on our agenda tonight, would love to hear from you. Just come on up to microphone, please announce who you are and what your questions or concerns would be. Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any dialogue or any discussion points we want to talk about on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, it's nice to see the different property owners working together to make it flow, because it'd be a lot better.
As a unit, it'll be better for the area then?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that. The, the zone map amendment be approved with the development enhancement overlay zone on the subject property of the Maybe Office Building.
Findings and conditions?
Including the findings and conditions, basically, yeah.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Our next item of business is a annexation, the Ray Allen Swinson Annexation.
This annexation is called the Ray Allen Swinson. Unfortunately, it's not related to the basketball player, Ray Allen, but maybe, I don't know, maybe he'll be involved at some point in the future. I'm not counting it out. Okay, this annexation is located at approximately 1730 West and State Road 77. If you go to the next slide, beautiful photo of it. I did accidentally capture myself in it, but that's what it looks like. The general plan land use designation for the area is currently agricultural, with potential obviously to change in the future. We'll see what that looks like. This annexation, if you go forward a couple slides, is within both the city's growth boundary and the annexation policy plan. So, I guess as a quick refresher to those, this image, it's really hard to see, but the little dashed red line is the policy plan border. And then, if you go to the next one, or back one, sorry, yeah, and then this is the growth boundary, or sorry, yeah, no, this is the growth boundary. And then, sorry, as a refresher to those things, the policy plan is just required by state law to define the maximum area that a city can annex. The growth boundary is a element of the general plan essentially that reflects where we have capacity to grow to. It's within both of those. So, the reason you guys are seeing this annexation today is to recommend zoning to the city council on this. It went to the city council back on July 1st, where it was accepted for further study. The protest period ended on August 8th. We didn't receive any protests. And then, on August 27th, the Development Review Committee recommended approval with the RR, Rural Residential zoning, which they found to be a good fit, just because there's currently no development plans for this. It's currently being used agriculturally. The RR zone would let them annex and still use the site the exact same way. So, that was staff's most recent recommendation. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. What's, what's the story with timing on this? Sounds like continued plans for using it much as it is. I see it's adjacent to the airport, but what's kind of the staff's, or the thought behind this timing?
Timing for development?
Timing for the actual annexation. Is there a potential? It sounds like nothing's planned right now, right?
Yeah, so for the annexation, I guess the next step is that it would be approved by the city council.
No, no, why do we want to annex it now?
Oh, why do we want to annex it now? This was a petition, so it was requested by the property owner. They're kind of in the path of development up there. Obviously, there's a lot that's been building. I guess I don't know their exact reasons precisely for wanting to annex, but there's utilities that have been stubbed quite near this, this property. So, it has the potential to develop in the future with, I'll call it relative ease. But I think, I believe the applicants are here if you wanted to ask them any questions about that, but that's my understanding of it.
But it's being annexed as RR. So, for any development besides agriculture to go on it, we would need to, it'd need to come before the commission and council again.
And zoning would need to change at that time. So, it was essentially just to stay as it is?
Precisely, yeah.
But be part of the city?
Yeah.
So, you said that utilities are stubbed in if you become part of the, or enclosed by?
They're nearby, yeah.
And so, if they're there, then does that entitle them to have a city utilities brought to the property? And who pays for it?
It, that would be a part of development. So, whenever in the future they decide to develop the property, then the developer will end up paying for those utilities to be extended to the actual property with whatever development occurs there.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Does the applicant want to come and say, describe any of the properties? Is that, are they here? No?
Is it out? Yeah.
You don't have to.
But we'd love to hear, we'd love to hear from you.
So, what questions do you have?
Just what, what has changed your mind about going from the county to the city?
Because we have had some developers that have come forward and asked, and we've also had developers and the city that are interesting on putting a substation on the property.
Great, thank you.
So, we wanted to get it annexed before we move forward with anything first.
It's the right step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want me to dance and sing?
This is not a public hearing, so commissioners, do you have any comments? Do you have any concerns we want to discuss?
It seems very straightforward.
Yeah, I don't see anything changing really, so.
I'll take, I'd like to hear a motion then.
I would propose a motion that we recommend approval of the annexation petition at 1730 West and SR 77. And keep the zoning, or with the zoning RR, Rural Residential.
Second?
I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the Title 15 Amendment. And this is a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The proposal here involves detached accessory structures, which for the past several years, I should say detached accessory dwelling units, also happen to be individual structures. But for the past several years, Spanish Fork City has allowed freestanding buildings that are on the same property as another home to be used as ADUs, we call them, accessory dwelling units. Still is a relatively new change for the city. Originally, 8,000 square feet was required as the minimum lot size to have an ADU. That since has been reduced to 6,000 square feet. And we had an experience a few years ago, again, shortly after changing the code to allow for ADUs to be in freestanding structures, which is opposed, for example, like having a mother-in-law apartment in a basement, sometimes they might be called, or that type of thing, an ADU that's housed in the same structure as the primary dwelling, which is quite common. We had an experience where somebody applied for and was able to get a building permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit that was, was I would say essentially the same size as, as homes in the neighborhood on a lot that was not necessarily any larger than your typical lot. And we recognized that there was a little bit of a scale issue to that, that maybe in some ways, or at least in our opinion, didn't really fit in with the concept of having a separate living quarter apart from the primary dwelling that really isn't intended to have any impact on the neighborhood. Supposed to be kind of subtle and discreet, but yet to, to be a legitimate home. So, at that point in time, we proposed and the council adopted a maximum square footage requirement of 1,000 square feet for an ADU that's in its own building, a detached ADU. That was just a few years ago. Is everybody following me so far?
Mm-hmm.
So, we have that 1,000 square foot rule in place today, and frankly, I think it's an important rule. Again, with the idea of wanting to make sure that ADUs, they don't have an impact on neighbors. Doesn't change the character of the neighborhood at all. And I say that being a big believer in ADUs. I think they can potentially do a lot of good for property owners, our society, I think it can be a very good thing. But I think it's important to handle them the right way. So, and what's proposed tonight would not change that 1,000 square foot rule for all but very few properties in Spanish Fork. But indeed, the proposal is to eliminate that 1,000 square foot limit if somebody has a property that is one acre or larger. So, for me, the concept really goes back to, I think, what concerned us when we dealt with this before. A bigger structure that looked out of place by where, way of where it was because of its mass and its scale and how it really didn't fit in the location that it was constructed in. It got permitted because we didn't have anything to, to use as a reason to deny a permit at that point in time. However, given the fact that we have a property owner today that they have an acre and there's an old home on the property and they'd like to construct a detached ADU, happens to be in the Leland area. And as we've looked at the situation, particularly the building official and I, and have looked at the house plans that the applicant's provided to the city, and I've thought through as many things as we have been able to yet about the situation, we really feel that having a second home on that one same property, not, not a new property for another home, but again, just a situation where one home on the property is accessory to the other, that allowing for a home that's a larger, excuse me, that is larger than 1,000 square feet would not be out of place and would not create necessarily any noticeable impact on surrounding properties or anything in the neighborhood or that sort of a thing. And in my opinion, that really is the result of just the size of the property. So.
Is there any, excuse me, David, is there any limit on the size? If you're, if you're eliminating the 1,000 square feet, is there no upper end limit now?
Well, as proposed, no. I think that's in play, though. If you'd want to consider maybe some threshold still, I think that'd be reasonable. That would, that would align with what we did before at 1,000 square feet. If you wanted to talk about a new ceiling, maybe that would only be available if somebody had an acre or more.
So, right now, it just shows as long as the setbacks are all good, then we're good.
So, as proposed, I want to touch on that, because that's another thing that I think is really important. Currently, you can go up to 1,000 square feet for a detached ADU, provided that you just meet the setbacks for an accessory structure on the property, which are shorter or less of a setback than what would be required for a home. You go as close as five feet, for example, to a property line or to another structure if you're using the 1,000 square foot rule. Now, for reasons, again, for me, it's primarily just scale. And given the kind of situations that we're talking about where people do have more room to work with, and I think neighbors expect more space, maybe between structures and that type of a thing, we would suggest that even if somebody has an acre, well, it'd be only if somebody has an acre and somebody wanted to build something that's larger than 1,000 square feet, then they would have to abide by a greater setback, which would be the same setback requirement as what is called for in the underlying zone. So, instead of five feet, for example, on a rear property line, it would be closer to 25 feet. And side setbacks, I can't remember exactly what they are for our one acre residential zones, but it's going to be more like 10 feet or more and that sort of a thing. Again, trying to keep the scale appropriate, not wanting to disrupt neighboring properties, but yet affording people an opportunity that I think philosophically aligns with what the city's done in the past and just trying to do it in a way that works for everybody as best as possible. So, in a nutshell, that's the original proposal. Then, as we discussed this in the DRC meeting last week, you might have noticed, that we've suggested that some language be removed also from the code. And it has to do with what we described years ago as architectural compatibility. The idea that if you want to build a detached ADU, it has to look in some way, ways maybe even, like the principal dwelling on the property. And that, I think it's an important concept, I really do. We've had some trouble administering that for reasons that sometimes I think are a little bit out of our control as staff. Mostly, we've run into maybe argumentative situations as property owners have, they've designed a home or building that they want to construct as a detached ADU, kind of great lengths and expense to prepare plans. They submit those to us and we review the plans like everything. And in the case of this, beyond just making sure that things are consistent with building code requirements with the plan review, we look at architectural compatibility. And oftentimes, they've been very, very distinct designs from the existing home. Sometimes I think that's unavoidable, sometimes I think it's harder to avoid. In the particular case that we're talking about tonight, the home that's on the property was built in the early 1900s. Making a contemporary building architecturally compatible with that one is challenging. And maybe the biggest challenge is what is architecturally compatible? This is the language, what struck through there. The shall be architecturally compatible with the primary structure. That leaves a lot to interpretation on the part of our folks that are reviewing something and somebody that is maybe designing the plans.
But we have used that repeatedly on my tenure on this board for many applicants and made them change their design. And if, if an applicant comes with a, with a design that doesn't meet our standards, that's their own fault. That has, city has no, should have no issue. If they want to be argumentative with that, they just don't, don't do the project then.
So, maybe a, a better approach than what we have today would be to try to articulate some clear standards to be met.
I think, I get concerned when we start changing things for what is applicable to one lot that we're looking at. What you're saying makes great sense for a house that was built in the 19, early 1900s. It's, you, you probably don't want to duplicate that, but when we're talking about to the rest of Spanish Fork, where we want to keep the look of certain neighborhoods, that certain flows, so the rest of the neighbors, when one person adds another dwelling to their property, don't have something that doesn't flow with the rest of the neighborhood, I think that's important. So, I get, I get concerned when we change our rules that are applied to the whole city to work for one property.
I think that, yeah, that is something I'd have no argument for at all. I completely agree with that.
But doesn't, they're going to be, they're going to be held to their zoning, how it's zoned anyways, with their setbacks and everything. So, that's going to restrict their size and look of the.
In theory, it would. There definitely would be a limit as to the footprint that would be available for somebody to build on. But when you get to an acre, you know, a, a property that might be 200 feet by 200 feet wide, even with another homeowner, I think there's a lot of room to build still.
It's a lot of flexibility, yeah.
So, I think ultimately, it's, it's a matter of just the reality of what somebody would want to and could afford to build, that's probably the threshold unless you wanted to use a different number. And it would not be hard to say, for example, on parcels that are less than one acre in size, you know, to continue how things read today, external or detached accessory dwelling units should not have more than 1,000 square feet. And for properties that are one acre in size or larger, there's another number. in size or larger, there's another number, whatever is appropriate.
Would D cover? I mean, while it doesn't lay out square footage of the structure, it does provide some guardrails for lot areas covered. Would that?
You're right.
I mean, is that sufficient?
In terms of footprint, that does, yes. That's, it's another, and it's for you, I think, to decide if it's sufficient or not, but that is another.
But technically, they could do a four-story.
Could have more square footage. We still have height limitations, though. So there would be.
So there are some guardrails, though. It's not just unlimited size. We do, even if we didn't name a square footage for the AUD, there's still some guardrails about how big it can be.
It'd be setbacks and what you've noted, yeah.
I, I appreciate adding that there needs to be minimum setback requirements applicable to the principal structure. So I support that. And then, my question is, like, how big is a, well, I guess Michelle just, just address this, but like, how big is the home that they're wanting to add to this one acre lot? And would it make more sense to just subdivide the lot and build and have two half-acre lots and build that way?
I think in some cases, a subdivision might make more sense and might be practical. I think in other cases, having an ADU probably makes at least as much sense. So I, it could certainly work either way in this case.
A lot of these lots are, are more of a rectangle, they're not a square, so they're building in the back, they don't have enough frontage to subdivide the lot.
And just kind of taking your thought a little bit further, the practicality, and I do hate to use one case in point for something that applies citywide, but yet sometimes it's really easy to talk about the situations right in front of us now, so to do that. In this case, it'd be curb gutter, sidewalk, maybe some other utility improvements. It, it would probably make the possibility to add a dwelling unit to the lot just not feasible. This is not a lot, for example, that's in a currently developed area, which probably would be the case with properties that are one acre or larger oftentimes. So the subdivision opportunity probably would happen a lot less frequently and having a lot that are parcel that's configured, so it does make sense to subdivide.
With the, with this subject property that we're talking about, will, would the ADU become the primary, with a home that's, with a home that is that old?
Yeah.
The ADU becomes their primary residence and they, and the other one becomes a rental or, you know.
That's a good situation. You have the, the land, the homeowner living behind or on the same property as a home's being rented. We have housing for people that need it, and they're right there to see that the property's being maintained.
Yeah, just kind of a little nuance to the code and the way Chairman Mitchell just described it, it's absolutely right. The property owner has to reside on the property. Whether they reside in what we consider to be the accessory dwelling or the primary dwelling is up to them. And we have both situations in town, but as long as the owner resides on the property, I think, you know, the benefit of having that arrangement is realized and.
The other question is, are there, bringing up the neighbors again, like, are neighbors having any concerns? I guess if we're talking about setbacks and you're putting one ADU on a property, it's probably not as big of an impact to neighbors.
Yeah, another way that, that the building official and I looked at it, this is a second dwelling unit on a property, but at least in theory, for example, if somebody wanted to raise the older home that's on the property now, they could build a home exactly like what's being proposed here today. So I, I don't know that there's necessarily, you know, and like, think about it in terms of theory, what could happen and the like, anything that would be more impactful than what somebody could do today by right, except that you could have two on a property. So if that helps or makes sense, but that's.
So if something like that happened, so you're, you approve an ADU on a property and the, it is one of them designated by law or in plans or code or something like, this is the ADU on the property, whether that's the primary, and then you raise the principal that's not labeled the ADU.
So then you just have.
Then, then you have one on the property.
Which is the.
And that becomes the primary.
Absolutely.
Or the principal.
Yep.
It's not the ADU anymore.
And that, that situation has happened exactly like that in Leland, in that area. So.
People live in the, the ADU while they construct maybe the new.
Yeah, they lived in the old home, built the new home, tore the old one down.
Yeah.
And that's happened.
One thing I'm curious about is, okay, we're talking about this example with a house built in the early 1900s. One thing we've seen even here in town is that setback requirements have changed over the years, so things older than 50 years old may not have that. I'm wondering, what do we run into situations there where, you know, the, let's say the original dwelling is going to stay there, that setback is in gross violation of whatever we have right now, we could, would the new dwelling be required to be in compliance with what we have, or could there be some leeway there? This might be going down the rabbit hole, but you see what I'm saying there, right?
That is an extremely realistic scenario. And in short, if there's a dwelling on a property today that doesn't meet our current setbacks, that we would, for a variety of different reasons, say is grandfathered. It's legal non-conforming. We would not use somebody's desire to build an ADU as a justification to require them to do something to bring that existing structure into compliance.
But could they have a grandfathered exception for the ADU to be in a similar situation?
That is not part of the proposal, and I would suggest that we don't do that, primarily because the new structure, particularly with the way this is written, could have a very different look and feel than that, that older home.
Right.
The non-conforming dwelling. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we would suggest that the new construction be required to meet the current setbacks as they be applied to any.
So that would be our, our sort of standard as we reviewed and approved that. Obviously, we can add our option, choose to, you know, give an exception too, right? But that would be the intent.
It's really hard, actually, to give exceptions. So I would say the setback rules, as they're written in the code today, would have to be followed entirely for new construction, for what we're talking about here, for an ADU that's larger than 1,000 square feet on, you know, a lot that qualifies. And we could look at, I mean, there would be ways to change maybe our setback requirements if that was something the commission wanted us to look into, but that's not.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's there, but I just want to understand, like, you know, these will be unique properties, right? They're not, potentially. And with one acre, you have a lot of flexibility for all sorts of things, obviously newer things that may have, be compliant with setbacks would probably be different shapes and configurations and in different places, so, yeah.
Less limited, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So going back to the taking, to, to striking the shall be architecturally compatible with the primary structure on the lot. I, I know we've already talked about thinking about keeping things in the spirit of the neighborhood. I agree with Todd on that. I also understand an older, a century-plus-old home, it'd be better to have an updated home. They still.
That's not, that's not the correct term, though. An updated home would not be, is architecturally compatible. I just completed two years ago, an architecturally compatible apartment building that was compatible with the old Mason's stable in Salt Lake. It followed the compatibility of that, and it's a modern apartment building.
Modern, and then the look.
The look, it just had throwbacks to what was that stable was built off of. So that's up to interpretation. I don't think is, I mean, I get Dave's or applicant's angst that they may have that when somebody is, they're thinking they're being compatible, and maybe we or the reviewer's saying they're not, I can gather that could be a concern because it's up to interpretation, but it's, it can still be a modern home, that maybe you don't have the exact same full, you know, brick that was made in the 1900s, but you have a modern brick that is of a similar color, or, or something that throws back to those elements. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's too far of a stretch for any designer to do.
I actually agree with Todd on this.
As we've kind of tried to administer the architecturally compatible standard, color, building materials, roof pitch.
We've done it several times. There's many, many duplexes or some ADUs just here on the west side of town, just blocks from here, that we have, the home in front had no changes to it. The new buildings in back complement that structure. They fit with the neighborhood.
You're talking about a very different situation and different processes from what the code right now.
Than what this case is.
Is talking about. This is simply a staff review in a different forum than like a legislative proposal, a zone change or something like that, where I, I think the, the rules are very different. And there is room for more subjectivity on the part of the planning commission, city council. If somebody wants the law changed so that they can build something that otherwise you can't build, which is the case like with a development enhancement overlay project, you know, building maybe the townhomes. I can think of a handful of projects, trying to think of a really good one here. The townhomes that were built over just south of Third South on about Third East, sorry, Fourth North over on Third East.
Yeah.
That was a development enhancement overlay project where ultimately, the city just has a lot of discretion as to say, we like this design, therefore we'll approve it or not. And oftentimes, as part of those discussions, we talk about this either does or doesn't seem to fit in with the neighborhood, and that's partly because we have language written in that, that zoning district's description that talks about that sort of a thing. It's not a point I really want to belabor, but in this case, this is one of our staff people that's looking at a plan on their own and trying to determine if, in their opinion, it's architecturally compatible or not. And of course, lots of different people have lots of different opinions, and sometimes it's blatantly obvious. And if we want to keep the language here, I see value in that so that we can have some reason to say, whoa, 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 you have nothing here, or this is completely distinct from what's surrounding it, and it is going to be a concern for neighbors. So from that perspective, I think it probably would make sense, at least for the time being, to keep it as is.
My recommendations would be keep, to remove the, where it's been stricken, leave that there. The other additions, I, I personally have a problem with. I think with the size of the lot that you're recommending there, I can't, I mean, as I look throughout where we have a lot that might be applicable to this, they should be able to make it work. And what their intent for their use of a primary or, or maybe as an ADU, doesn't matter to me. It works, and I'd like to keep. I mean, if they can keep the house to have it be used, then that's great. If it ends up being demoed and it's now their front lawn, we're in no worse situation than we would have been if they went a different route.
Right.
So. I'll speak one thing to light, to, I don't necessarily say strike it, but I think different zones could have different standards of an, of what's compatible with the architecturally compatible, right? If you're, like, the case that you brought up, and I know this is a specific case, if you're building a new, modern structure that is an architecturally compatible in an area that's somewhat rural and everything like that, and it doesn't, it doesn't seem to change the fundamental nature of the neighborhood or something like that, I mean, to me, that doesn't seem like a problem. But again, when we're applying this across the whole town, I think we have an interest in keeping that architectural compatibility in place. I mean, let's, let's look at this building. It's not architecturally compatible with Thirber School next door, not at all, but.
They both have brick.
There's a story to it, and it's meant to flow, anyway.
But it's a big, this is a big block, and that's an old, an old school. Doesn't offend my eyes, so. Again, it's subjective, too.
Yeah. That's something to think about.
We have people propose things from time to time, and things have been built that, in my opinion, I try to put myself in neighbor's shoes, and I feel like, boy, that is clearly out of place, clearly. You know, if I were a neighbor, I would feel like that should not have been built that way. So maybe just from the perspective of having some kind of safety net in place so that we can screen out, using phraseology, I probably would, would change if I thought more about it, but we oftentimes write rules to deal with the lowest common, you know, maybe the worst case. And from that perspective, I think it makes sense to keep the language in place. And perhaps writing something into, I'd probably put it, I'd probably put it in L, to your point, that, you know, offers maybe additional leeway if we're talking about a lot that's an acre or larger. I think that makes sense as well.
So if we leave the one that's been stricken and then we approve it, because I got no problem with the acre and all that, who decides what's, you know, I mean, if this is approved and that's a new thing and it fits, who approves what it looks like?
Yeah, today it's staff, and it stays that way.
I'd have no problem with that.
Would you like us to take a stab at adding some language to provide flexibility if you're in the acre realm or?
I would give them as much flexibility as possible, make sure they keep their setbacks and stay within their zoning requirements. I would not limit it size or anything.
I'm a huge fan of flexibility for appropriate. However you would say that, I think if, as long as there's flexibility, I got no problem with the way it is.
I think it should stay, and I would, I would think more flexibility for a one acre lot.
Okay.
But I would want it to stay if it's smaller, if it's a smaller lot.
Okay.
More impact on the neighbors.
Yeah. I don't think that's, that's a hard concept to put.
So what, what do you want to do? You want to wordsmith something and come back to us with it, or do you want to?
Is there a property owner that's dying to get going?
Yeah. There always is, right? And I think that's the case tonight. If you're comfortable with M as it reads, and with L, you want the shall not be architecturally compatible with the primary structure on the lot language to remain.
Shall be.
Shall be.
Not, shall not be.
Did I misread that?
You made it real easy.
That was not intentional. And we're talking then maybe as another clause to that sentence to add something that would, and tonight, I would say, just provide flexibility from the architectural compatibility requirement.
Yes.
If it's for an acre or larger. I would almost even hate to bring that back to you if it's just that. In fact, what I'd be happy to do, I'd probably, collectively, we'd probably write something better tomorrow than right now, but I could send that to you guys via email and look for, maybe before we take it to the council, if that's okay.
I would agree.
Just bounce that in, you guys.
In our motion, when we make it, that would be, finding commission's condition or finding, we'd like to see that from you.
Yep. I think right now, we have a public hearing scheduled with the city council for their next meeting, and we'd like to stay on that track. But also, I, I like you having your, your fingerprints on it, so if you're comfortable with me, just sending that via email and kind of get a sign up on it that way. I can represent it to the city council then that, you know, you've had that additional opportunity to check it out, and you're either good with it or not.
Yeah, I just, I see this, and it affects, it's where I live down there in Leland, and I have that size of a property, bigger, and I could put a big house.
You have some space.
And still meet all my setbacks and everything.
The 15% rule, I appreciate Michelle pointing that, I had not thought about that, but even at 15%. The fifteen percent, well, I appreciate Michelle pointing that out. I had not thought about that, but even at fifteen percent, that's a big house still, but there is, there are limits in place.
I like it that way.
Any other comments for Dave? We'll open up a public hearing.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, this is a public hearing on this amendment. Is anybody here to speak on this matter?
It's, uh, my amendment.
If you would like to come up and it's a public, you can come up and speak to us, please state your name and we'll go from there.
My name's Sam Andres. Um, we've talked with Dave and, and everybody and tried to come up with the best, the best way to do this. And, and we really, I like the ADU, um, option. And I think, uh, that works well for, for this situation. And, um, and ADU is a great thing for, you know, if you have, uh, parents or kids or something or caretakers in that case, or something like that. Um, so anyways, I appreciate you here. And I think, I think Dave did a good job. It was a long discussion. Appreciate it. Anyways, any, any questions? It was pretty straightforward after you kind of got it down there, I think. So.
Yeah, that's great. Like we said, I think my only concern is, uh, for your lot, there's a lot more leeway, a lot more opportunities.
And so.
It's where we start changing the title fifteen for across the city that concerns me. I think the way Davis said it, we're, we're pretty good, but.
Okay. An acre or more, I mean, you can still be thirty feet from your neighbor instead of five feet. And, I mean, I would rather see that than five feet on a six thousand square foot lot when you have a forty thousand square foot lot. So anyways, so I appreciate any questions. I'm happy to answer.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. I think we talked through that quite a bit. We.
Do we need a men, uh, motion or wait till he rewrites it?
I think we would need a motion.
No, no, we were making a motion with condition that Dave addresses the concerns for item L as talked about in the meeting.
All right, I move that, uh, we, uh, recommend to the city council that the proposed change to the regulations for extern, external accessory dwelling units in this title fifteen amendments, uh, be, uh, proved to, or recommended for approval to the city council, uh, with the condition that item L, that our concerns with item L, um, uh, be addressed by, uh, Mr. Anderson.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion will go before the city council next week?
Well, uh, it'd be two weeks from last night after I get back in touch with the commission.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Um, that's the last of our spelled out items. We have another item for other discussion points.
Yeah. Very common property in town, the walls with us tonight. We looked at this in, uh, the development review committee meeting a week or two ago. And I'm hoping that Mr. Wagstaff got the latest and greatest, um, literally hot off the press here. The property that is just south of the commercial site, I know it is, it's for the Italian places. Picture that on Main Street, pretty prominent. Um, and I'm not trying to bias anything, but one of my favorite looking, at least from the outside, houses in Spanish Fork forever has been the house that's just to the south of that across the street. Um, a couple of things about it that I think are really cool. Well, it's that site that we're talking about tonight. Um, and, uh, viewed as a great opportunity, you know, to do something great on Main Street and Mr. Hall as an idea. That's a little bit different from anything that we've seen for quite a while on Main Street. So we're here tonight just to get your thoughts. We understand we're catching you cold. Um, not wanting to tie anybody's hands or do anything but just have as open and candid of a discussion as you're comfortable having tonight about, uh, this particular concept. Chad, don't invite you up to explain it instead of me. Here and, uh, again, just love to get your thoughts on this.
This is, can you, there's on the corner of seven hundred North and Main Street.
This is the southwest corner of seven hundred North and Main. Yes.
Yeah. So it's the Hermanson House right on the corner.
And then they just.
Can you get the street view?
So we, like you said, like, uh, Dave mentioned, we kind of recognize that this is a little bit, um, unique for Main Street and also just the history with the house that's there.
This is hard to look at.
Is gonna be, it's gonna rub some people the wrong way. We recognize that. Um, structurally, the house has some issues. Obviously it's been there for quite a while. So structurally, the, the house has some issues as far as going in and refurbishing it and repurposing it. So we've kind of looked at it from a different perspective and, um, doing something a little bit different on Main Street. And like I said, where it's a little bit different, we just wanted to get kind of some general feedback, um, before we get too far along on this and see if it's something that's, um, that's feasible really to do in that area. So like I said, we literally just got these back from the architect a few hours ago with updates. So it's kind of last minute, but I know nobody's really had a chance to really look at it, but.
Thank you.
Um, like I said, just looking for some general feedback, thoughts, concerns, um, anything like that on it. So.
I have two words, architecturally compatible.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, that's the big theme for the night, right?
So give us some, some details here. How many units are you looking at? It looks like three stories. What's the?
Yeah. So this is kind of more of a mixed use, um, idea. So the main floor would be a three story building. Main floor would be some just general commercial units, um, professional space is the idea. Um, above there would be, um, eight units, eight just single bedroom, uh, residential units. Um, the biggest constraint on this obviously is going to be parking. Um, we've been involved with some other projects in other cities, um, similar to this. And kind of the general idea is, you know, your commercial parking is during the day, your residential parking's at night. So they kind of offset a little bit, um, which is the way we've kind of looked at parking on this. Um, because that is going to be kind of the constraint.
How much parking do we have there?
I believe we're right at twenty-six stalls is where we ended up at. Um, which I think if you look at the code, based on the commercial space, which Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think on the commercial space, it's one unit for every three hundred square feet, which puts it about fifteen stalls is what would be required for the, uh, commercial space on the main. Um, and then if we did two, two stalls per unit above, that's another sixteen. So it'd be at thirty-one. So we're a little bit short, but if you kind of look at that, you know, offsetting schedules between the commercial and residential, um, we don't know that there would be a, a major conflict with that, but.
I love mixed use. I think that's a great idea for that location.
Like you said, it's, it's definitely unique. I don't think there's a lot of, I mean, that I can think of. I don't know that there's a whole lot of other things like this in town. So I think it's a little bit different. Um, but I think it fits with the location and, you know, the future growth of Main Street and things like that. So.
I just really like the look of historic Main Street and this, the look is not historic Main Street to me.
Yeah.
So.
It's definitely more modern.
Yeah. I, I know that we don't have any, um, well, I don't know. Do, we don't have any standards for what, what Main Street is supposed to look like, but I don't know. I, I would prefer more of a, more of a historic Main Street look to it. I think the, I think mixed use there is great. That's just my own personal opinion.
So you feel good with, uh, the idea of mixed use? You just don't like the look?
Correct.
That's kind of, that's my, my thoughts on it too.
I don't know. I like that they did mixed use right on Main Street. I mean.
There, there is some mixed use on Main Street. Um.
There is.
Historically, right? I only, I've delivered meals on wheels on Main Street and to residents along, you know, that are hooked onto commercial buildings. Now you were before the time of mixed use, Spanish Fork.
Almost maybe ironically, right?
Yep.
Because most of the buildings that, well, I shouldn't put it that way, but certainly, uh, I would say a number of buildings on Main Street, if we went back to its origin, have housed both non-residential and residential uses in them at the same time. You know, exactly how we would define something as mixed use today. Um, if we go downtown, which, um, I think there's something different about Main Street from Center Street North to like Fourth North, that is, that's the heart of Main Street. And I think it makes sense to have other things on Main Street relate well to that area. That's just my opinion. Um, and, uh, as I look just from kind of afar, this perspective, in a lot of ways, you know, flat roof, um, relatively short setbacks. Where in downtown, there's almost no setback in a lot of cases. Um, there are things about this form that are very much similar to historic Main Street buildings. Now maybe building materials. Pardon me.
You must be really.
Have a flat roof. That's.
I, I agree. I think it lacks a little bit of character.
Well, so they're right.
It does, I do.
I'm taking it one step at a time, right? You got mass.
So elevations, character, like, yeah, I can see what you're saying now, but.
Like I said, these are, these are very preliminary, like kind of starting the process, right? These are preliminary plans just to get the idea and concept out there and just get the feedback before we get too far and too invested in this. Like I said, so these are kind of, you know, first, second rendition.
I don't think we have anything like this currently on Main Street. Is there?
Um, take this for what I've thought about. Main Street.
Off of it and it.
Yeah, it's the taking the decks.
Take the decks off and that and it'd look like the rest of the building.
No, I'm saying a mixed use development like this on, with eight units above it.
Yeah, the, the closest like comparison that I've been able to come up with is Main Street Plaza. Right? That, I would say that is something of a contemporary kind of a building. It's twenty something years old now.
Yeah.
Um, and in, I see some similarities to this. You know, they have the walk upstairs on the backside to get to the second story units there and, and that kind of thing.
There's offices there. How many dwelling units?
No dwelling units, but in terms of just the structure and nature, that's the, and I'm not saying that's a great comparison. That's the closest.
Right. Who would have anything that has residents on Main Street?
Not that this, that's been built that I can think of in the last certainly twenty years. Yeah.
Well, it's, uh, I think we kind of have a bit of a grab bag on, on Main Street.
Well, it's funny. Yeah. You know, we had the, we call them the CPAT folks. We're here, help us put together our historic Main Street plan just a little over ten years ago. And as part of their work, they did an architectural analysis of what we have downtown and you name it, it's there. Art deco, um, uh, you know, I don't know how you describe the, the like turn of the century, you know, eighteenth to nineteenth kind of, kind of Main Street kind of construction. KMA Architects just a few years ago built this type of, you know, very modern structure on Main Street. So it, yeah, there is certainly a little bit of everything there. Um, so.
And this is currently just a zoned, what, what residential zone is it? Or is it commercial?
It's residential, is it?
Well, about the zoning, yeah, a couple of things to note. And that's part of the reason that we want to get your thoughts now. There certainly would be a map amendment required. So the zoning would have to be changed. And I believe also we probably would have to make some zoning text amendment to accommodate what we're looking at here. Um, those are easy things to do if it's a concept that you and the city council are comfortable with. Um, I think we can come up with a reasonable way to, to adjust the, the text of code.
What is it currently?
I want to say it's R O, R O, right?
Which is a zone that allows for residential and non-residential in the same structure. So maybe we wouldn't need a text amendment. We'd have, or sorry, a map amendment. Yeah, some things like that. We'll touch on a couple of other details here, but I wanted to let you guys talk things through first.
Can I ask another question? Can we go back to your, your plat map, your, your site layout? Not the elevations. No, yeah, that one. It shows it. Can you zoom, scroll up a bit or shrink it? Yeah. Right now, that currently doesn't go, that little L comes back or the, that's not currently like that on that property now. It's straight along the back.
Yeah. So that, um, so on the south side is, uh, Valley Chiropractic, um, chiropractic office. So there's a joint access off of Main Street. So that L shape that you see is actually their parking lot for the property next to.
This piece?
Yeah, that, that corner piece, that's their parking lot.
It belongs to the, for this property.
Yeah, for that property next door, which is a chiropractor office building.
So that's why you don't have any parking.
Yeah.
What kind of uses would you think, uh, for the, like the storefront? Are you thinking offices, like medical, something like that?
Yeah, definitely something more like professional style. Like you said, where we're kind of offset like parking, right? Like we don't want conflicting businesses going in there that are going to conflict with the residential units, right? So ideally we would do something more professional, you know, your eight to five kind of things that are clo, open weekdays, closed weekend, weekends to allow the, the parking to kind of offset a little bit. So something more along those lines of professional office space or retail space.
I'd imagine with stuff like that, I, if I were to consume, you know, whatever service was there, I'd, I'd probably just consider parking on Main Street.
Yeah.
It fills up quick, but yeah, you could.
Look. Where's you gonna put your like dumpster trash?
So originally they had it kind of in that, uh, right-hand corner that, uh, down there where that one stall is.
Down in here?
Yeah, kind of right in that area. Like I said, this is still pretty preliminary. So.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking, if you got eight residents plus businesses, you're gonna need probably one to two dumpsters.
Yeah, I think we could probably work with the neighbors, like currently they don't have a dumpster enclosure. So maybe we could work with the neighbors on kind of doing a combined dumpster enclosure or something like that in that corner. So.
Well, I guess I'll give you my opinion one more time, but that's just me, one of how many and city council. But I don't really love the, I don't really love the, the look of the outside, the elevations. I like some, that, like there's, we do have a grab bag on Main Street, but I have liked, for instance, on the corner of, is it Fourth North? There's the, there's the brick buildings. It's a newer building, but it has the orthodontist there and some financial. Like that just is a more pleasing Main Street kind of look to me.
Southwest side of Fourth North.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, John Smiley's building.
Anyway, so I don't know, but we don't have standards for what it should look like on Main Street.
Um, the building that you're talking about that, so just across the street from that to the south, yeah.
Yeah.
That building got built, um, or was under construction when I came to work here. And it was not what Mr. Smiley originally proposed to have built there. Um, he proposed to build a building and I don't necessarily expect everybody to recognize this, but if by chance you are familiar with University Avenue and Provo and the Zion's Bank Building on University Avenue, not Zion's, the central bank building, sorry, Central Bank Building. So west side of Main Street, not Main Street.
University.
West side of University Avenue in Provo on the corner of First North and University Avenue. There is a title company building on the northwest corner there. It's a brick building. Uh, very little setback, goes right up to the property lines. And in a lot of ways, I think it looks like it was there a hundred years before it was built. That was what the city approved originally to have built here and things changed. That was what the city approved originally to have built here and things changed. In my opinion, what was originally proposed, proposed to be built here would have fit in a lot better. With the rest of Main Street, it would have framed the intersection better. It would have been more reminiscent of how things were built. You know, when most of what's on Main Street now was originally constructed. And I wonder, you know, you get a little bit further to the north and I think potentially, you know, something similar to that kind of concept. Might work.
Yeah, that does look really nice and that seems, that seems more me. Why did he change? That is, that would have been good on.
So I described that. Does that by any chance?
I like that, but I like the, that title company better than.
So if you could take.
And definitely better than what's, what's just the drawings are there.
If you could take the concept that Mr. Hall's talking about here and have it fit more within, like that particular kind of aesthetic of design of a building. And, and I'm not trying to be persuasive, I'm more trying just to ask, does that?
That more goes with what's in my mind, but I, I, I'm, it's super, it's super just, preference and what I would love for something like Main Street. Do you guys know what we're talking about?
We're pro title is.
Yeah.
Am I off?
No, 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 just waiting for you to finish so we can.
I'm done.
I like the concept of having, of, you know, the mixed use and whatnot, so. I'd just like to see it. Fit.
Yeah. No, I mean, aesthetically, we can kind of, that's easy to tweak, right? Like, we can clean aesthetics up. The big, like, our big question is just kind of the mixed use idea, right? Yeah, we can definitely look at aesthetics and fitting kind of the old, you know, Main Street style aesthetic and stuff like that, so.
And you're, you know, your parking is going to be an issue. I understand what you're trying to do with it, but. I can see that being an issue forever on that building if. Get everything, all the units rented out and that, it's going to be tough to park everybody.
How many bedrooms are your units?
Just single bedrooms, so just one bedroom units.
It's good to get a variety of options.
Yeah.
I actually really like that idea.
I don't like the, I don't like the concept. I don't like the, the look of it right now. I'm, I'm not for that. I feel like we're shoehorning it into a lot that, uh, I'd rather not see it on. Um, Michelle made the statement she's for mixed use. I am too. I just don't feel like this is the proper place for it. So I would have to see a lot of, I don't know, I just, I'm not for, I'm not for what we've got proposed here right now. In, in the concept or the look.
I love it. And I think about a, a one bedroom, you know, I think about who might occupy that and they can walk to the library when they have the food trucks. And they can walk here, excuse me, the old library, for the food trucks and they can walk here and they can walk, you know, to the businesses and get, go to the barber and. Yeah, I, I, it's appealing. Um, definitely, I would like to see a little bit more character and, you know, an attractive exterior. But for me, the mixed use in that place feels right.
Yeah, I think I, I really like it too in a similar way, but, uh, I think Main Street's one place where we have, it's, it's just entirely unique. If you, if you look at Main Streets and, and a lot of Utah communities, I think a lot of them are very much that grab bag concept that I talked about. And, and, and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I think though, if you're willing to work on aesthetics, there, there's a, there's a lot of options there. A lot of ways to, to make it work. It's one of the places where we can play. I mean, you couldn't drop something like this, you know, on Fourth North and Thirty East or something like that. It's, it's a little off, right, but.
Yeah. No, for sure. Like I said, aesthetic wise, we can, we can play with that.
And I'm sure my wife's watching at home and she thinks the same thing that Dave. This house is like one of my favorite houses in Spanish Fork, along with my wife. So when she sees it, she's gonna beat me, but, you know, I, it, for me, it's hard to get past the house being gone. But it being gone, I think if you make it look right, then it is what it is, you know, if it fits in there, then.
Yeah, no, like you said, I, we know it's gonna rub some people the wrong way, right? Like you said, but, um, we did have an inspection report, the seller had an inspection report done on the house and it was ninety-five pages long on, things that had to be fixed, right? So as, as far as going in, refurbishing it, kind of keeping it, it's not really feasible.
What is the size of that property?
About a third acre, I believe, off the top of my head. So.
Any other feedback we can give the applicant?
Chairman, can I touch on just a couple of other details? I just want to make sure that we get them out in the open and I'll ask Brandon, Ian and Dave to add to whatever maybe I missed. But first of all, that diagonal parking, um, on the north side that's proposed, that potentially is a concern for us, having that that close to the intersection. And that being said, if you remove those four diagonal spaces, you'd at least be left with two parallel spaces that, might simply make it easier to, to navigate. That being said, the intersection of Seventh North and Main, uh, eventually, likely will not be a full movement intersection. There will be a median that will make it so that you're, only going to be able to make right-hand turns from Seventh North onto Main Street to go southbound. Uh, we don't know exactly when that project will happen, but it might be in the next few years. That might lessen our concerns about the diagonal parking, um, for different reasons, might not, but that's a concern. Brandon mentioned earlier that the property to the west with this would still be intended to be used residentially. And with that, we do require a certain amount of landscaping adjacent to where the parking stalls are shown. And that property, it's a ten-foot wide buffer that we require with trees and, and that kind of a thing. So that's, that's a code thing that we'd want to work through. Um, the parking numbers, um, I think one, uh, maybe interesting thing about trying to figure out how to make this work, uh, would be a pretty carefully orchestrated parking program that might involve even, some limits on the types of tenants that you could have in the building. I think Mr. Hall's correct. By the way, we essentially require three parking spaces per thousand square feet for certain non-residential uses. But for others, we require more and that type of a thing. So having something like this happen in our residential office zone probably, um, I think would warrant some type of additional way to regulate who's there and how that works from a parking perspective. The concept of co-tenancy with uses that most of the time use parking, maybe heavily different days of the week or different times of the day so that, you know, there's, there's a functional relationship that you get there. Um, I'm a big believer in that and I think it works, but I think it works particularly well on scale. But when you get, I think it's harder to make it work when, um, you're looking at a more limited, smaller kind of an area. But I, I think there's certainly potential to make that work, but those are some things that the staff, we noted that I think still need to.
When you say restrictions on what offices or what uses the, the business sites could be in, what would that look like?
Like, for example, somebody wouldn't be able to take even a thousand square feet and put a call center in there. You know, where they've got people in cubicles that are fifty square feet apiece and, or less, you know, and might have twelve employees.
On workers you can have in there, or is that a limit on uses? Or how, how does that, how does the city implement that?
Or office hour? Do you, do, do office hours limit?
You're, you're, you're absolutely right on to, I think the things that we'd have to think through. And just come up with a way to, to make sure that there's some, um, guardrail in place to, to see that it works the way that I think Mr. Hall intends for it to.
Cause even like a, a dental office could have six staff and six patients there and that'd be twelve parking spots.
Well, and our parking requirement for a dental office is twice what it is for the other kind of offices like what Chad. So yeah, that probably would be one that would be not allowed. Or you could have an attorney's office that, practically speaking, they need two parking spaces. So. Just a couple of the thoughts, gentlemen, you guys, am I missing? Or what am I missing?
When we're looking at the parking, is this a type of location and use that, for instance, the garage requirement goes away? Um, and then we also talked setbacks, you know, R O setbacks are very different from the commercial downtown setbacks. As far as would you prefer it to be pulled up, you know, with a minimum of ten feet? Or excuse me, with a maximum of ten feet, or is that something that you'd prefer fifteen or twenty? Those are things that we'd probably want feedback on.
Even that ten-foot buffer on that back property is going to kill the parking.
Tell me about the parking right here. You can't do, these are parallel spots and you can't do this here?
Yeah, so, so the drawing is a little misleading. So the parallel stalls on the right-hand side of the page actually butt up against the building that's there. Um, so it's not shown on the, that site plan, but that building, those stalls are the, right there against the building, on the adjacent building. Which kind of limits the space on that side.
So those wouldn't even count towards this project?
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't counted those towards the count that we, we mentioned earlier.
Can you back to the other page, please?
So your property line is right? Right down there?
Correct.
Right off that corner.
Yeah, right off that corner, straight out, like I said. We would just be using that joint access easement off of Main Street. And splitting the entrance.
The existing house now doesn't have access to Main Street. It's a driveway.
Yeah, it doesn't have, it goes out on, uh, Seventh, Seventh North, kind of right where it shows it now.
So with our concerns about parking, there, there's a possibility that you'd have to shrink the building, have six apartments and smaller residential there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like you said, if we could work something out, like as far as parameters of what businesses could go in on commercial and limit the hours that they're open or something like that, you know, that's one option. The option, other option is shrinking the building, like I said, limiting space. There's a couple of options we could look at.
Parking's a big deal.
Yeah, for sure.
Do we know what this distance from here that your building is?
Off the top of my head, I think it's sixty feet.
If it's sixty feet, then we don't have a problem with the ten feet. We talked in the DRC meeting.
If it's less than that, there would be a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get much less than that and then, yeah, particularly the idea that it'd be a walk around the building. Uh, but one of the things we talked about at the DRC meeting, I think, has been taken into account here is, you know, maybe shifting the building a little bit further to the east to create more space on that backside to allow for some separation between this and the residential structure. I'm a fan of less setback on Main, but if you think about this block from Sixth North up to Seventh North, there's some relatively new buildings, right, on the west side of Main Street there. And they've all followed our typical setbacks for the residential office zone, which is twenty-five feet. So this would be different than that. I don't think that needs to be bad, but it would be different.
There's no reliance on those setbacks for any plans that they have for the Main Street redo or whatever that you thought is planning?
Yes, at some point that is an issue, yes. I don't think with the Main Street widening, any, additional right-of-way is needed. Byron or, so, but, well, I think it's largely because from the existing curb of Main to the existing curb on the other side of Main, there's a lot of room to work with. But we've talked about that and I can't remember in nature really where that went in the DRC meeting, but. Understanding that Main Street is likely going to change, I think that does need to be considered.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
Yeah, yeah, good point. You got a lot of flexibility with those setbacks, right, if you, so.
I appreciate, if you guys, yeah, that's one way to look at it.
Yeah.
My one pet peeve, which I'm not trying to shame anybody, but that is not desirable. Asphalt right up to the sidewalk, parking stall, no thanks.
You don't want to see an island there.
What you're saying is there might be one or two fewer parking spaces than what we're seeing here.
Yeah.
It's been pretty aggressively laid out that way.
Yeah, like you said, very preliminary, right, so.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, I, I really appreciate the conversation. If you want a bullet put in this, tonight's a great time to communicate that to Mr. Hall.
That's not the feel. I mean, aside from me, that's not the feel I got from the rest of the commissioners. Um, maybe me and Mike, I don't know.
The house there is beautiful. I agree, but.
Yeah, and that's not so much my concern. My concern, I mean, that is, I, I do feel that's sad for me, but it's, that's, I can still picture that being gone and something's going to have to happen. Um, either way, those owners are, have passed away and the people they pass it to had no respect for the land, so they sold it. So it's going to be, it's going to be something else. But I just, I just don't like the idea. But I think for the rest of commissioners, I, I would say it's actually hopeful.
Right.
I kind of like the idea. And then if we talk about the redesign of Main Street where you're trying to make it more walkable and everything, isn't that the goal? With the redesign on Main Street to.
This really fits in pretty well with the concept.
And even though I don't like that idea of the Main Street, but, um, I think this would fit down the road. But I think the, you know, there definitely going to be some issue with parking and especially where you're using the neighboring property and everything for access. It's going to be.
Yeah, no, obviously there's some issues we gotta work through, right? Like you said, it, it's probably a little bit before its time maybe, but I think long-term, Main Street, you know, this might fit in better in twenty years with what comes in the future, right? So it might be a little bit ahead of its time, but if we're promoting night walkability and things like that on Main Street, I think it fits. Kind of what's planned, so.
Any comments?
Appreciate your time, I do.
Yeah, we appreciate feedback and comments, so we appreciate it.
Have you, are you, um, maybe this isn't a question asked, have you purchased land or are you just, just in contract now or?
No, we, we've purchased it, so, yeah, we've closed on it, so.
One or another, you're going to be coming back in front of us.
Yeah, yeah, right. Got to figure something out to do with it, right? But yeah, no, we've, we've purchased it, so we're just looking at options, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
The last item is my favorite one, unless you have anything else to, for us to discuss, Dave?
I don't believe so, thanks.
Okay. Let's adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.